Okay. So, call to order and roll call?
Commissioner Russell.
I am here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Woods.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ferry.
Present.
Chairperson Hollins is excused. Commissioner over.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And approval of minutes. Consideration of minutes for approval. Consideration of June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting minutes for approval as written or with noted corrections.
That's approved.
All right. That's approved. Do we have a second?
I'll second it after I've read it. I don't see any corrections, so I'll second it.
All right. That's approved and seconded. So that motion passes.
Sarah, can you turn on your mic?
Oh, it's on. Am I not? See, you guys have never heard me so quiet before, have you? All right. So now, item two is consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to A R S thirty-eight four thirty-one at all. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission. Oh, I already read that, didn't I? Do we have any public comment? No. All right then. We can go ahead and move on to item three, reports.
Vice Chair Commissioners. We've prepared a report today. Effective July one, the new solid waste rates went into effect for our customers. So we just kind of thought we'd put together a report kind of outlining that process and some of the changes to the services that our solid waste division will offer going forward. So I apologize at the beginning. This slideshow was too long, but some of it should go pretty quickly. So this is just an outline of what we'll be talking about today. Funding background, rate study timeline, the rate study process, customer survey that we conducted as part of the rate study, the National Community Survey, which the city of Kingman participated in in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, some public information that we put together, solid waste insert that went into the water bills, some private recycling options for our customers, and a brief discussion on the fiscal year twenty-two budget for the commission. So the overview, you know, we talked about this, but I know we've had some new folks on the, on the commission. Solid Waste is a division of the Public Works Department. But like water and wastewater, solid waste is an enterprise fund, which means it's totally funded by the rates we charge our customers. There is no general fund tax dollars to go to support solid waste, water, or wastewater. We're essentially running these utilities as businesses, and we have to pay our own way. It's been well over ten years since we did our last rate study. The last three or four years, we were unable to purchase any new garbage trucks and trying to keep the older fleet that we had on hand running is a very expensive operation. So we have conducted a rate study. We'll talk about that some tonight. This just kind of gives the financial position. I'm not an economist. I can't, or accountant, so I can't explain this in detail. But our fund balance was, was not in good shape. We have to maintain a fund balance for emergency operations. We have to be able to operate for ninety days, assuming that no revenue at all is coming in, and trying to maintain that the emergency fund balance and, and purchase the equipment that we need was no longer tenable. This is, uh, this is the kind of statistics on our trucks. You can see that, you know, average age is anywhere from eleven to eighteen years old. Typically, most solid waste businesses or divisions within other agencies, you know, they're shooting for a seven to ten-year lifespan on a vehicle. When it comes to fleet management, the best way, the best way to get the most value out of your fleet is to auction it off or sell it while it's still worth something. And we haven't been doing that. We've been holding on to everything because we needed everything we had to make sure that we had enough to run on any one particular day. This is just kind of the timeline for the rate study. You know, we hired the consultant in December of two thousand and eighteen. We've made, uh, this goes all the way back to some of the initial changes that we made to our recycling program. We brought in the remote locations, brought those in, consolidated them at Public Works. So we presented that at the Clean City Commission and the council. We started talking to the council about the rate study and the Municipal Utilities Commission. And the reason for that is, under the city code, Municipal Utilities Commission is the commission that governs the enterprise funds and rate setting for those funds. So any proposed changes to the rates charged has to go through the Utilities Commission and then be, make, and then they would make the recommendation to council. So we, several iterations went to council. Back in, excuse me, back in, uh, May, I believe it was May twenty twenty, when we went to council and kind of outlined what the recommendations of the rate study were, council kind of asked us to, to take a minute and go do some public outreach. So, May of two thousand and twenty was a tough time to do public outreach. So, you know, it took us a while to figure out how to go about that. And what we did was a, a series of videos that we put on the, on social media, on the website, distributed kind of some of this information, but, you know, here's who we are, this is what we do. And then ultimately, put together a survey that went out to all of our customers and, which had a great response. You know, it was quite the project and, and everybody in the office was tallying survey results. And we had a great return on the surveys that we put out. And based upon that input, we were able to finalize the recommendations for the rate study, take that back to council, make sure that we were on track with what they were thinking, and then process that through the Utilities Commission and then back to council for formal adoption. And again, the rates became effective on July, in July of two thousand and twenty-one. So the rate study included a program assessment. So, you know, one thing we wanted to do was take a look at everything we're doing and seeing. You know, we're not proud. If there's better ways to do things than what we're doing, we're, we want to know about it. So we brought in some, you know, we had our rate consultants, the financial folks. We also brought in some solid waste operational outfit to kind of review how we go about what we do and give us some plans for, recommendations for improvements. How, how can we be more efficient? We looked at recycling feasibility. We looked at transfer station feasibility. You know, would it make sense for us to build a transfer station, minimize the number of trips or consolidate the number of trips out to the landfill? That was analyzed. Their findings on that were that our landfill is a hike, but it's still close enough to where the cost you would incur with the construction operating, continuing operation and maintenance of a transfer station would not be feasible. We'll look at the revenue increases and the financial plan summaries, and then the rate alternatives. And again, then we're looking at benchmarking, and that's the comparisons to, to other cities, other private operators. And then ultimately, you know, look at the possibility of privatization, if that would provide a better service for our customers, a more efficient service for our customers. So we identified the financial plan options. You know, the, the goal would be that we'd be able to meet the needs of our ongoing operations and maintenance and to meet our vehicle replacement needs to provide our, or provide the services that we need to provide. Internally, as a city team, we performed a cost of service analysis to where we broke down, how much does it exactly cost us to do a bulk trash pickup? You know, and a lot of them are going to be different, you know. But there's some findings later on about, you know, what those costs actually were and how much we were subsidizing. Certain portions of our services were subsidizing other portions of our services. And maybe that's not the fairest approach. So again, we looked at this, uh, the service analysis. They found that we have an adequate number of trucks and staff. But again, that's with, we've got too many trucks is what we have. We've got more than we, than we should have, but we need all of them because we only have so many running at a particular time. We looked at once a week trash pickup. That would require a waiver from D E Q. Several of the other area cities have gotten that. They've gotten it back when they were doing curbside recycling so that you have one trash pickup per week and you have one curbside recycling pickup per week. In some of their new contracts, their curbside programs have gone away and you're still maintaining the once a week trash pickup. And that's, so, all these factors are kind of what built our survey because this is stuff we need to know from our customers. You know, what, what's important to them. So our, our consultants on the rate study, they always, they, they want to clarify the, the revenue increase versus the rate increase, you know. A revenue increase doesn't necessarily have to entail a rate increase. There, there's a difference between the two. And again, you know, why would we need to increase our revenue to replace the fleet, to replace the aging fleet, to meet the operational cost and to meet, maintain those targeted reserve levels that we have to maintain? So here's some of the findings. So what we found was that commercial service cost exceeded revenue cost being collected by over twenty-five percent. So that right there says that our residential customers were subsidizing commercial collections. Residential bulky pickup cost, cost over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to operate. Recycling program cost, and this is based upon the old program where we were, we, we were consolidated at the Public Works operation, costs more than three hundred thousand dollars a year to operate with about ten thousand dollars in revenues. And the big difference, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but, you know, our, our recycling operations were primarily staffed by inmates from the state prison. They stopped coming at the, the end of two thousand and nineteen, and we haven't had them back since. And I don't know if they are coming back. But when the pandemic hit, that program ended. So they stopped sending out inmate labor, which was a big difference for us between paying fifty cents an hour or paying, you know, fifteen dollars an hour for temporary services through one of the local labor agencies. So kind of summaries, residential customers are subsidizing these other programs outside of residential collections.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, uh, in this, um, the cost of the recycling program, is that with the inmates? Is it more than this if we're using the temp agents?
Yeah, it actually would be. And, uh, because we had to revise those numbers in the rate study. Because if we were, if we were directed to reestablish the, the recycling program, it would have to be costed at, at, you know, full expense labor.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
So we looked at these scenarios, you know, no change, leave everything alone, which really wasn't a, an option for us. Eliminate recycling, keep commercial, eliminate commercial, keep recycling, eliminate commercial and recycling, or go to a once a week collection for residential and keep the commercial. So rates by class have been updated to reflect the cost of service. Rates include a ten-year vehicle rotation utilizing a seven-year lease program. So we'll actually be leasing to own those trucks. At the end of that seven-year period, we'd be able to, um, to auction or sell those vehicles and use that money to supplement our vehicle replacement program. And you, you're going to get a lot more money for a seven-year-old garbage truck than you would for a fifteen. Those, they're very high maintenance vehicles. Most fleet management systems at different cities or, or utilities have, it's, uh, you know, they have a, a standard unit of, you know, it's, a, a big piece of equipment is equal to, their, their standard unit would be like one sedan. So a big piece of equipment could be equal to the same maintenance hours and, and expense as, you know, five sedans. Well, trash trucks are always the most expensive vehicle in the fleet to maintain. So again, this was the, the plan, looking at those different options and what those revenue increases would be in the first column, what the rate increases would be in the second column. So ultimately, this is what we took to our customers in the survey. And again, this is some of the comparisons with, with other cities around the state and then with some of the private haulers in our area. The information for Bullhead and Havasu, you see, well, with Bullhead, it was while their contract negotiations, negotiations were pending. But I think that ended up being in this, in the same general vicinity. So then we talked to council about this upfront, you know, the idea of privatization. You know, it wasn't something that we were proposing, but we understand that, you know, what, what we're trying to do is make sure that our customers get the, the best service in the most efficient manner. And we understand that we're going to have to prove that we're there with those private haulers. So, you know, you have the option to privatize your utilities, and this could be with any of them, with water or wastewater also. But with sanitation or with solid waste, it would be the collection disposal of, of your trash billing. That's usually optional and customer service is optional. But while we, we perform all those in-house currently. So here's the terms of the, the contracts with Republic Services that Bullhead and Havasu have. Again, this was when Bullhead's contract was pending. But I believe this information's, uh, pretty close to how that contract ended up finalizing out. And Havasu was actually fortunate. They, they signed a contract at the right time with the long term on it. So they, they, uh, they probably got one of the better contracts with the longer terms. So it'll be a while before they have to deal with this. Again, our considerations of privatization were, you know, the displacement of eighteen of our employees, the lack of control and accountability, contract terms. You know, that's a pretty sophisticated contract law. Those are major corporations you're dealing with. Uh, rigidity of contracts. And then it kind of limits your future options. You know, if you, if you were to privatize and then liquidate, you know, your fleet and all your other equipment and, and, you know, either lay off or try to reassign all that staff, that really limits your ability to, to start up again in the future if, if you, further analysis were to show that, that were the way to go. And then this is kind of what, you know, at least we think these are a lot of these benefits of us providing service. You know, we're not for profit. Solid Waste has an excellent reputation for customer service. We've got the local control and accountability. We've got organizational values. You know, we've been able to preach the same address message, you know, and that's customer service and safety. And, you know, we made great strides on the safety side of that in solid waste division. Uh, community outreach and partnerships, you know, what we're doing here and what we do with this group. Transparency, you know, the potential impact to the county landfill. If it were to be outsourced and one of, whoever was, you know, if a new private hauler came in and they didn't use the county landfill, then that would be a big financial impact to the county. And again, you know, solid waste division's a big contributor to city services. The other internal, internal funds, you know, the fleet maintenance and building maintenance. So this is kind of what the direction we got from council was. Figure out your public outreach and do a good job at it, then come back and tell us what you learned. And then it would be scheduled for further council and utility commission action. So we kind of put together this roadmap for how to do outreach in a pandemic. And like I say, between social media and other sources, we did a, a pretty extensive education program. Kind of let people know, you know, like I say, who we are, what we did, and kind of the background on enterprise fund. We're not funded by general fund dollars. We're not funded by sales tax. And come up with this plan for our survey. So we conducted the survey from November to December. At that time, we had eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven solid waste customers. And we, we got almost two thousand responses, which is a great response. It's actually a, a higher response than the city survey, which was, uh, you know, scientifically valid at, at a plus or minus five percent. So we were above that. Kind of surprising, most of our responses were old school paper responses. We were on Survey Monkey, but again, most of ours responses came back with water bills because we sent them out with water bills. And this is kind of where we made the correction on the, or the adjustment with the temporary labor versus inmate labor. And that's reflected in these costs going forward. So this, these are all repetitive slides, but I don't know, I, I feel some people read graphs better and some people read numbers better, so I got them all in here. So question number one was, do yours reside, reside in the limits of the city of Kingman? And it was overwhelmingly yes. And that was ninety-six percent yes. Two, city of Kingman currently provides twice a week trash collections for its residential customers. How would you rate your overall service? Very satisfied. That's almost eighty-eight percent. So that's, that's pretty impressive. Question number three. City of Kingman eliminated its drop-off recycling program. Do the costs, when the program was in place, how frequently did you use it? So this is kind of evenly split. You know, twenty-six percent of folks said they used it weekly. Around twenty-seven percent said they never used it. And then twenty-four and twenty-two percent used it monthly or rarely. Excuse me. Question four. If we were to reduce, reduce current levels of service to once per week trash collection, how concerned would you be with the following? And the answer, so on the side is where you'll see the categories. So that's odors and smells. And people were very concerned, about forty-five percent. How concerned would you be with rodents and pests? Very concerned at forty-one percent. And then accumulation of trash. Very concerned was the top answer again, at fifty-one percent. So this one's a little, this is a little trickier question, I guess. So currently, the fees nineteen seventy-eight per month for two, for twice per week collection has remained the same since two thousand and seven. Please review the options listed and select your most preferred options. So option number one is maintain the current level of service of twice per week collection at an average five-year increase of a dollar twenty-nine per month to a twenty-one dollar and seven cent monthly fee. Option number two is to maintain the current level of service of twice per, per week collection with a drop-off recycling program at an average five-year increase of three dollars and eleven cents a month to a twenty-two dollar and eighty-nine cent monthly fee. Three is to reduce the current level of service to a once per week collection at an average five-year decrease of four dollars and fifty-six cents a month to a fifteen dollar and twenty-two cent monthly fee. And option number four is to reduce the current level of service to a once per week collection with a drop-off recycling program at an average five-year decrease of approximately two dollars and seventy-four cents a month to seventeen oh four per month. So option number one was the, was the largest response. And just to go back. So option number one was to maintain the current level of service to twice a week, at twice a week. So option number one came, came in just below twenty-five percent. Option number two, three, and four were all around eleven and twelve percent. So this was a follow-up to option number three or four, which would have been the once a week trash pickup. And if you had selected that, would you pay an additional fee for use of a second trash can? And the answer was no. At thirty-seven percent. So that was the end of our, that was the end of the survey. And that's kind of when the recommendations for the rate study were finalized and went back to the utility commission and for presentation. And went to council, and council had adopted the notice of intent to, to change the rates based upon the recommendation. And then went back to council for formal adoption with those rates becoming effective on July of two thousand and twenty-one. Well, this is some information from the citizen survey. Again, this is something that the cities participated in in both two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And this is a, a pretty highly regarded, uh, survey. I know that the, uh, the City Managers Association is, is a big participant and big proponent of this survey. And so a lot of communities around the country use it. And that's probably impossible to read. But that, this is a, based upon the responses from citizens of Kingman, this is how different, uh, different, different divisions and departments are, are rated for their, the service they provide. And I did give you a little bit of a blow up on the garbage collection. on the garbage collection was at eighty-five percent, so the only department or division that ranked higher than solid waste was the fire department. So, again, this was part of the public outreach, once those rates were established by council prior to them going into effect, we sent this mailer out to all of our, and everybody, it was in everybody's water bill. We've talked a little bit about, you know, since the city no longer offers its drop recycling program, we just, we just thought we would let the public know that there are other options out there, we are not promoting any of these, this is just for public information, that there are other options for recycling in our community, and that would be Bulldog, KER Recycling, Waste Management, and Recyclops. So, along with the rates becoming effective on July one, solid waste operating budget became effective on July one, too, so for what we call fiscal year twenty-two, which is the year that we're now in, it's been eight thousand dollars budgeted for Clean City Commission activities and materials, and, you know, we, we've done this every year to, to kind of fund our public outreach and education program, so that's what's in this year's budget. And with that, I know that was too long of a presentation, but I can try to answer any questions you might have.
Do you want to have any questions? All right, that was very thorough, thank you very much.
Most of that went.
No. All right, then, if we don't have any questions, let's move on to old business. Item A is the event calendar, monthly update of the Clean City Commission event calendar, discussion and possible action regarding any new or rescheduled upcoming events.
Vice chair, members of the commission, again, this is an item that we're carrying on need, as a regular agenda item, I don't have a lot for this month, but I don't know if now would be the time to start talking about participation in the county fair, you know, traditionally we have, and generally that's where we've spent most of our money, is at the county fair, and, I don't know, I guess I would open that up for commission discussion on whether that's the, the best use of our resources or not.
In my opinion, for the amount of money that we spent on the county fair and the amount of work it took, I don't think we got the results that we really were looking for. I would kind of, at, at the end of the day, kind of check some of the garbage cans and others than the little goodies that we were giving out to the kids and the adults, the literature was all in the garbage can, it never made it out the door, let alone home, so I, I really don't know that it was worth the amount of money we had to spend on that fair.
I agree with that, I think that if we can do more events like the city expo that we did, that was really neat, there was a lot of people that were really engaged in the community that came to talk about, you know, to learn what, what we're doing and what's going on, so I think the smaller events where we can really talk to the people from the community, and, and maybe events that are more in line with the Clean City Commission, you know, or community outreach.
Well, if that, if that's a consensus, we can just move forward with that, understanding that we won't be participating at the county fair.
Do we need to make a motion on that? Okay, I, I would like to make a motion then that we delete the county fair from our calendar this year.
All right, with a motion and a second, do we have, what do I say, all in favor? Should we take a vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, then, motion passes. Is there anything more on the event calendar?
I don't know if this is the time to, to make this announcement or, or wait till announcements later on, but I did talk with Gene Kirkham, who handles Chilin on Beal, and to see if it would be okay for us to put a, a information booth out during Chilin on Beal when we have all of the people downtown walking up and down the street, just information literature, I, I don't think we need to do a lot of giveaways like we have done in some of the past shows that we have had, but as, as people are kind of interested, I think, in the recycle, we always hear about why can't we recycle, and I think they need to know what the costs are and what the revenues are on recycling, and so they get a better, better idea of why we can't do the recycling right now. I told him it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be this weekend, because we haven't, this meeting is tonight, and there wouldn't be time to put anything together, but he said it'd be fine when we want to do it, just set up a, a table and even an easy up, if we want to put an easy up between my car and your car, or whatever, we could do that, that would be just fine, so that would be an outlet for us.
I'm sorry, what, what, when are those usually held?
Pardon me?
When is that usually held?
The third Saturday of every month.
I can give a quick update on the first Fridays, we haven't decided on closing the streets yet, there is some talk about that, but I'd be happy to host, any of the businesses can host anyone, it's just really, really hot right now, so I'm not sure if it's really a good time for anyone to be really sitting outside just yet, just to brief up.
So, I have a question, brochures and stuff like that, information that we all talk about, are there brochures already made up? Do we have to have new ones made up? Who's working on that? How's that work?
We've got, we've got certain things that we passed out, like at the city expo, we passed out the adopt a block application, we passed out the, yeah, we passed out that, that flyer that we had for the rate changes, I think we passed out the, something about the community recognition program, so, those are the kind of things we're, we're.
Anything specific to the Clean City Commission and?
We haven't updated like, like an overview of, of who we are and what we do in a while, but more, it's been more about the specific programs that we've been working with.
Okay, does anyone else have any more comments or suggestions for events? All right, then, let's go ahead and move on, community outreach and education, regular monthly agenda topic for discussion and possible action regarding the next presentation the commissioners would like to arrange, and what topics would be of interest to the community.
So, vice chair and commissioners, what we kind of talked about a little bit was maybe before the August meeting, starting to put together a, a list of, you know, ideas that, that you had or that we had about folks we can out, we can reach out to, and maybe start trying to schedule some of that in, so, if that's okay, we can, we can start working and get, get the preliminary list out, out to the, at the next meeting, and maybe if you have the chance to beat the bushes out there a little bit and see, you know, who you know that may be interested in coming to speak, and start trying to schedule those out with them, and if they need time to prepare something, or if they got a canned presentation ready to go, so we could just kind of build a calendar for those out, out, out into, you know, the rest of the year, so that's kind of what we were envisioning, if that sounds all right with the commission.
I think that sounds good.
And just along, along the way, if any of you have any ideas, or if you meet or talk to anybody that would be interested in that, if you could, you know, provide that to us, you know, their contact info and name, and what subject matter, and, you know, we can reach out to them and, and see when they might be available to do that, too,
All right, that sounds great, so item C is service, oh, sorry about that. All righty, so, let's go ahead and move on to item C, service to the community program, discussion and possible action regarding the service to community program.
Vice chair, commissioners, our risk management division made me look good this month and had some draft waiver forms, and I guess I will reiterate that these are draft, they still are going through the city attorney for, for review and approval, once, once that approval is finalized, I think that allows us to move into the next step, which is, you know, actually outlining what the program is and what it is not, you know, I think we kind of talked in generalities about that a little bit, but, you know, at least, and I'm not sure what everybody else's vision is, I mean, my vision is that we're doing, you know, weekend projects for folks who don't have the means or the methods to, to clean up their properties, that we're doing yard work or some other minor repairs, you know, we're not doing major building repairs, we're not reconstructing anything, maybe we're painting, maybe we're brushing out weeds, you know, or, or hauling off debris and trash, so I think, you know, we could start working on that, as far as the program specifics, and, you know, maybe bring something back on that, I don't know if that'll be in August or not, I'm, I'm actually planning on not being here for the August meeting, so you're kind of, you'll be in a better place, so. Oh, good, good, so, yeah, I don't know if there'll be any major changes to them or not, that might take a little bit to go through the attorney, and I don't know, there's also our, our risk pool, our insurance that has to approve all these things, too, so, you know, it's, it's not easy, but it's doable, and, you know, we'll keep working at it, so.
Did anybody have any comments or questions?
I don't even know if this would fill in, in this, this section or not, a while back, we talked about the acknowledge, acknowledging people, businesses and private citizens that have done major improvements on their homes and businesses, beautification kind of thing, we were gonna, we were talking about going back and giving them a little appreciation certificate, and I didn't know if we were gonna decide to, to continue that, or, or did we kind of, it sort of went by the wayside for a while.
Yeah, I, I guess I can't really talk about too much, because it's not on the agenda, but we'll have an item on next month, this, next month's agenda for that.
Good enough.
All right, that's exciting, that's progress, all right, so if there's no more discussion, then we'll go ahead and move along. Item D, commission vacancy, the Clean City Commission has received three applications for the vacant seat that is available since the resignation of Mr. Hamilton, the applicants have been invited to attend this meeting so that they may introduce themselves to the commissioner. Would you guys like to come on up, Ben? The commi, commissioners, I should say. Thank you.
Hi all, I'm Randy Carpenter, and my wife and I moved here two years, three months ago, after planning on moving to Kingman over four years, and it finally came together, we moved out here from Simi Valley, California, we're so happy we're here, all came together, and we both retired and packed up and came out, have roots here, my dad purchased forty acres out there off of Blake Ranch Road thirty-five-plus years ago, my stepmom owns it now, and, and so that's how I got familiar with the area, and, so thank you for considering my application, and thank you for what you guys do. Any questions?
Thanks so much, does anybody have any questions?
I hope you didn't get burned out on the Blake Ranch Road area with that little fire they had up there a couple of weeks.
No, we live off a wall.
Oh, okay.
Did you see, I'll, I'll see my application, I was arborist for thirty-one years, you know, yeah, okay, so, got that information.
That's great.
Well, thank you for putting in your application.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, nice to meet you.
Good evening, vice chairperson Ferry and council members, thank you for having me here tonight for this presentation here, my name is Mike Case, and I've applied for this Clean City Council vacancy, I'm a resident in the city of Kingman, I bought a home here in two thousand and eighteen, and I've served our country honorably in the Marine Corps for four and a half years, I retired from the postal service of about thirty-four and a half years, and if I'm selected, this will be my first time ever participating in anything like this, because working for the post office, I didn't have much chance to do anything else, I do have a couple hobbies, I like to bake, I'm kind of a novice baker, but I like to bake, my specialty is cheesecakes, just in case y'all like cheesecakes.
Well, well, yeah.
Well, that's after I get elected, no, I'm just kidding.
We're, we're all official cheesecake tasters, so you just have to bring your product in.
Yes, I will. And I'm also recently learning how to paint art, you know, doing like the Bob Ross stuff, and I'm gonna be taking some classes, so, since I retired about a year ago, I'm just wanting to venture out and start doing stuff that I never had a chance to do before, and also, thank you for your guest that you had last month on composting, because since that class, I started learning more about it, and I went to a few of the, the Arizona State University's courses over at the Mojave Library, and so I've started saving all my kitchen scraps now, and I'm just getting ready to build my Tumblr composters, so, thank you for that. I've been, I know Kingman has a lot to offer, and most of it is, to me seems like to be tourism, and I know a lot of tourists come here from all across the states, all across the country, because I see them, I live about five blocks from Locomotive Park, so, you know, I go that route and see them all the time, one of the things I've noticed while I've been here is, you know, there's a lot of litter and trash, you know, especially on the, on and off ramps, and in the neighborhoods and stuff, and I know when I go to other towns, I like to drive around, just check out the town, and to me, it would seem like it would leave a bad taste in somebody's mouth, you know, like go back, yeah, I went there and it was really a trashy town, you know, and I know the city's got a lot of ordinances for that, and I like to be a part of trying to help solve a problem, you know, let's clean up the town a little bit and make it more appealing and desirable to tourists, so that's what I like to do, and I would also like to be part of other groups, you know, programs that somebody else comes up with, and I also like coming up with ideas, most of them probably aren't feasible, but I just, you know, constantly brainstorm and thinking of stuff, like listening to the speaker here, I was jotting down notes, you know, the things I could suggest in the future, you know, so, and that's basically it, I just like this town, and I made it my home here, and I just want to do a little bit, whatever I can, and if by chance I'm not elected to this position, you've got my information, so if you need help, you know, whatever, I'm, I'm available, because I'm retired now, so I can do that, so.
I have one question.
Yes.
There was a estimated hours per month you can devote to this group, you left it blank.
Oh, okay, well, because I wasn't sure what the demands were, because I just recently went through shoulder surgery, so I do have a little. shoulder surgery, so I do have a little, I'm not able to lift and stuff like that, so I don't know what kind of volunteer service would be needed, but I could probably, due to, on a monthly basis, you know, let's say 10 hours a month or so. I mean, it could be more, it could be less, it just depends on what's going on, because, you know, I do want to do other things, too. Yeah, any other questions? Okay, y'all have a great evening, thank you.
That sounds great. Thank you so much, nice to meet you again. All right, if that is that, we can move on to item five, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. Does anyone have any announcements?
So, I was, actually, whenever we were talking about the program, we also, we have the adopt-a-block program. Did we get a current list of that? I know we had talked about that, seems like a few months ago, about getting a current list. And then also, I had a question about just the adopt-a-highway program. Who oversees that here for the city?
That's ADOT, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it only ADOT?
Well, we can, we can put it on the agenda for a future meeting, I guess.
So, the city doesn't, in any capacity?
We have an adopt-a-block section, that's what we clean up.
Okay, so we can just get.
Or adopt-a-highway.
Yeah, adopt-a-highway.
Okay, and just a reminder with announcements, we can't have discussion, because it's not on the agenda, but you can request to have agenda items put on for future meetings.
Clarification on adopt-a-block versus adopt-a-highway of what the Clean City has. I know we have an area, I just don't know who's the overseer for it, and that's all I had, just one question.
Do you have anything, C?
Just to remind everybody that this Saturday is Chilling on Beale, from 3:00 in the afternoon until it's too dark to look at cars. And then the Saturday after that, the 24th, it's a powerhouse, and I believe it's from 5:00 until 8:00, they're having a, they're putting up an inflatable Route 66 shield to drive-through, similar to the big wooden one that we'd put up on Beale Street. And at any rate, there will be a lot of, I don't know how many entrances Josh Noble is allowing, but there should be a lot of very beautiful old cars down there, and other activities to go along with it, so that'll be this Saturday and next Saturday.
All right.
Wait, this Saturday?
This Saturday's Chilling.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's the hours on the 24th?
I believe they're, they were listed in the paper at 5 till 8, but we may have to get some clarification on that. I'm hoping they'll put another announcement in the newspaper.
Kathy, do you have any announcements? All righty, anybody else, would you like to make any announcements? Good, okay, I have a couple announcements. I, one thing is a request for, if we can have some applications for the adopt-a-block and adopt-a-park and trail at our meetings, if that's possible, that would be wonderful. And maybe the application for the Clean City Commission, if we have any openings, and the, I think if we could just have the items that you mentioned, that would be really nice. And then I wanted to give one announcement for Kingman Main Street. We are a nonprofit, a downtown nonprofit, and we do a trail cleanup, and so that is with the adopt-a-trail program. And so, this Saturday at 8:00 AM. The same, I know, isn't that horrible? I know, I'm sorry, guys. This Saturday at 8:00 AM, we'll be cleaning up White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail, we'll be meeting at the Trailhead, if anyone would like to join us. I wanted to remind everybody, we still have the adopt-a-park, adopt-a-trail, and adopt-a-block program. So, if you know any groups that would like to sign up, or if you and a bunch of friends would like to sign up, we'll have applications at our next meeting, and you can also get ahold of them at the Public Works office, right? Are there any here?
They're on the website.
Okay, and on our city of Kingman website. And I think that's all I have.
Could I go back to one thing, following up on that? Could we get that on the agenda to discuss the adopt-a-block program, to where maybe we can, between now and then, come up with ideas of organizations to touch bases with and make a list of them, and we can go out and see if we can get organizations to become an adopt-a-block?
Do you want to give an announcement?
No.
Kathy has an announcement. Sign the card for Linda Reddick, for her wonderful presentation. All right, and if that's all we have, then let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
I'll make an emotion, adjourn this meeting.
Okay, and would you all like to vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed?
I didn't think there would be.
All right, motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.